All right, we'll get started. I am sitting in today as Chair, so good luck, everybody. Here we go. We're going to open this meeting with the following statement in order to counter for the situation that we still find ourselves in with regards to the pandemic. In accordance with Executive Order Number 10-29-20, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors meetings are held virtually. Here we are. You can participate via Zoom and call-in number, which is located on your screen or on the agenda. Once you have called in and would like to comment on the current agenda item, please press star nine on your keypad to raise your hand. When you hear a prompt on your phone, please press star six on your keypad, and that will unmute you when it's your turn to speak. So with that, we're going to go to the roll call we've made. And I just, as a, just a quick reminder, you know, again, this is my first time doing, running a meeting via Zoom in this kind of format. And so a little humor and humility and understanding of this imperfect system will be great for everybody. And with that, please do a roll call vote. Roll call.
Supervisor Bow.
Are we having sound issues all the way around?
I'm seeing some internet connectivity issues with, it looks like our network. There's a lot going on.
All right, I'm, I'm here, I'm here in half of everything, so.
Okay, well, I'll have to reach out to IT.
That should be perfect.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Brown.
Chair.
And Supervisor Wilson.
And President. And I also am getting a lot of this background noise.
And Chair Bass is absent today, so.
So I'm going to start, I ask you to do the, or well, to help put up the flag for the salute. But if we, if we keep having these kind of issues, we may have to take a break and, and figure out what the technical solution is to this. So why don't we do that? Actually, let's skip salute right now. Let's take a quick break. Hopefully, it's a quick break, Ryan, and let's figure out, maybe all of us could restart our computers. I don't know, I'm just not being the most technical, I'm always told to do, so.
That's definitely a good place to start. I think, I think it's a network connectivity issue and, and we are good shortly.
Yeah, they'll be able to get it through. Just, we're going to get a 10,000 version, but as we get closer, I'm sure we're going to get a shorter version. It's pretty, pretty intense.
Okay. All right, so let's take it, let's take a shot. All right, so let's take it.
So we might be in.
Not a turning though.
Yeah.
You said a turn.
So let's go, let's, we're gonna do.
We're taking a break.
That's fine. We're taking a break until 9:30. Wish them we have a time set. I'm hoping that time set is now relatively. And, and, and no pressure, though. If there's really good information and we need it, I mean, then, then we're not gonna, we're not gonna cut anyone short. And so Ian and Michelle, I'm hoping that you pull at around 10:00 AM there. So I'm going to shut this down until we reboot the computer at the thing. So, all right, we'll see you guys in delay. We're going to try again. I want to thank our staff for jumping in at a moment's notice. This is, you know, par for the course in these times, so. I will ask that, I think we did a roll call. I see everybody here. I went through the, the methodology for people to jump on. And so let's, let's just start with the flag salute and then move into modifications of the agenda, I guess, and then see what happens from there. Let's give it a go. Do we have a, are we jumping on the flag thing, or, or am I just going?
I'm just. Sorry, I'm doing, I'm doing several things.
It's all right.
I think there it is.
All right, there we go. There we go. Everybody ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation for the underdog, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Moving on, are there any modifications to the agenda? CAO Nelson.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair Wilson. There are no modifications to the agenda this morning.
Okay, I'm going to move forward with the consent calendar unless I see, sorry, I have to bring up the participants here, attendees. We have some listeners in, but no one's got their hands up. So is there anyone from the public? If this is your time, if you have something you want to talk about on the consent calendar, please raise your hand. All right, I have public 7454 and public 2753 and a, a number ending in 2612. So, let's see. Let's see, let's bring in public number 7454. Here's your, your three minutes. Again, this is a three-minute time set for the public. And I have a, one of our staff is monitoring the time and will let us know when three minutes is up. So please start.
Kent Swatki here. That come from a. Talk on consent, I guess I'll address this a little here, but you guys ought to get on your flip phones and do a meeting or. To thank Virginia Bass for bringing that forward.
Yep, you know, we, again, I don't know if that is an internal issue or whether it's the connectivity of the caller. So what we're going to do, I think, is move on to public number, well, the next one, and we'll see how that works. And if it's not working, then we're going to have to check in. So Ryan, bring in the next caller, please. And this is 2753, so now's your turn. Public member ending in 2753. Okay, I'm going to suspect that this is, is an internal issue. Ryan, you want to go to the next caller and see where, how that rolls? All right, so this is 2612, caller number 2612.
Hello, Supervisors. My name is Eric Canaga, and I'm a program manager with DHHS. And I would like to comment on the consent agenda item number two, the retirement resolution for Joe Oki. And I want to thank Supervisor Bass for sponsoring this and bringing it forward. And I would like to wish Joe Oki congratulations on his upcoming retirement. Twenty-seven years with our county is absolutely amazing. And he's been a great support for social service branch, for the clerical team. And he's been working in our clerical units for these twenty-some years. And he has just been a rock-steady employee and just a wonderful asset to our organization. We're going to miss Joe, and we wish Joe the best of luck on his retirement and his future plans. Thank you very much, Supervisors, and congratulate Joe.
All right, well, that all worked. I'm very happy and also.
Good.
A good message and, and a good thank you. We'll, we'll probably have a bit more of that. So Ryan, can you let in the next caller, please? And Ryan, do you know what number that would be? It looks like it's 2753. That's you.
Oh.
Hello, this is Joseph Oki, and I would like to comment on item two. I would like to, first off, thank Eric Canaga for that wonderful comment that he had. And I want to say that I have been privileged to have worked for the county of Humboldt for the last twenty-seven years. And I'm grateful to the county for giving me the chance. And I also want to thank one of my former supervisors, Paula Turney, who's not with us anymore. Because of her pushing me, is why I've been able to make it this far. And I want to thank all my wonderful coworkers for helping me along all these years. And I want to thank my wonderful girlfriend for being part of my life and helping me with the next step. And thank you very much for letting me have this time.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you again for your service to not just the county, but the community at large. And this is how we keep civil society rolling for everyone's benefit, is the commitment of people like yourself. And it's very much appreciated. All right, so next we have the next caller. Ryan, can you bring in the next caller, please? And I believe that's a number ending in 1168.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
I'm clear.
Hi, good. Good morning, Supervisors and Chair Wilson. My name's Kelly Hampton. I'm the Deputy Branch Director of Social Services. And I'd like to speak on the item D2, Joe Oki's Retirement Proclamation. I just want to take this time to congratulate Joe on his retirement and wish him much luck and relaxation. I would also like to thank him for his many years of service to the Humboldt community and all the hard work that he's done over these last twenty-seven years. Just a quick word to say thank you to Joe and wish him good luck.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your service as well. And so next, Ryan, next caller. Looks like it's 2753, caller 2753. And thank you. To unmute yourself if you'd like to speak. Would you pressing.
Thank you. My name is Louie Absetek, and I am the Office Services Supervisor at the Social Services Branch Front Office. And I am the current supervisor for Joseph Oki and just wanted to take a moment to just say thank you so much for your service, Joe. It has been a privilege and just truly a gift getting to work with you these last few years. You are a wonderful asset to the Social Services Branch, and we are going to miss you so much. We hope you have a wonderful retirement and congratulations on this next step in your life. Thank you so much for your service and thank you for your time, Board of Supervisors.
All right, thank you. Joe is obviously a well-loved person in that department. So next we have caller number 2753. And you just, oh, actually caller number 5288. Please unmute yourself by pressing star six. We can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me, Mike? So your, your lag is your normal lag that we have. If you guys ever have these technical difficulties, I highly recommend you pick up your flip phones and maybe something to work. We, I could hear everything, normal lag during this whole long ordeal here. I did wish, I guess I should thank Joe. I mean, just being stuck with everybody else, sounds like he was phenomenal. I wish to speak also on item number three, which is caregiver appreciation, which Virginia, who's not attending today, brought forward. I want to thank the IHHS, IHHS workers and all the other people in all their facilities out here who have done so much to get us through this COVID crisis behind the scenes, frequently being paid close to minimum wage. And in the future, I hope they don't have to wait for, for raises for a year or two over 25 cents. I also wish to speak on item number eight. There's something here about putting a bunch, another hundred thousand into a fund with a company, using the liability fund, which I still assert is a misappropriation of funds under this particular category. And the money's being used, in my opinion, well, when you have people doing something wrong, then they need to have investigators to point the finger at somebody else. So this is obviously being run by the CIO's office and Amy there, another hundred thousand dollars going into a fund from a fund to, it sounds like investigate other people's doing. What, maybe, maybe the CIO's office could spend that. I strongly support investigating themselves for what I believe is a very dysfunctional and corrupt office. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on those topics. One last thing, public works, eleven regarding subdivisions. Just to let you know, I, I believe I'm able to do a four-way lot split down in Mexico for right around a thousand dollars. It'll probably be done in three months. Up here, it's totally non-functional. And that's why those of us who are in business will be leaving Humboldt County regarding our money and our investing and not having to deal with a dysfunctional process for enabling us to provide affordable housing. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you. And so let's, do we have any more folks that are from the public that want to speak on the consent calendar? Looks like we have number 3053.
Hello, Thomas Mulder. The only reason I raise my hand is to make sure those of us that are from the public and not from county staff could be able to talk. But you can hear us now, so I'm good, thank you.
Right, so do we have any more raised hands that want to speak? Looks like we have caller number 0151. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, Dottie Russell from Southern Humboldt. I just wanted to bring up the issue of what's happening with affordability and housing in Southern Humboldt. I'm sure it's in all of Humboldt. But if a person is on disability and they get maybe around a thousand dollars a month, if you divide it up according to when you get a loan, they say that 25% should be the amount that you put towards your housing. That means it would be $250 a month for housing. And I don't know of any place at all around here that you can get housing for $250 a month. So I think that we really need to be visiting Sacramento and finding out how, what they're proposing. What are they going to do? Because it's not working. And if you, if you try to do anything to, to help somebody in any way around here, then, then it's pretty likely a neighbor's going to get mad at you. So I think we really need to get on this. Section eight works really great, but there're not a lot of, there're not a lot of places even taking section eight. But on top of it, there's not a lot of slots for section eight. So coming up really soon, which is probably next month, there're going to be a lot of people and a lot of kids that are going to be in eviction. Eviction is a very trying, very traumatic experience. And if this rent relief could be made possible and clear and where to go, then people wouldn't have to go through the trauma. And it's bad enough to be an adult in trauma, but to be a child in trauma is something that will last forever and always be an issue for them. And it's not right when we can all work together and make sure that that doesn't happen to these children. So as an owner of a trailer park with people that haven't paid in a year, we're going to be evicting people. And they shouldn't be evicted. They deserve your help. And somebody needs to come down here and work on it and just make contact with the state so that this doesn't have to happen to these people and these children. It's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie. I just want to remind people that this is items that are on the consent calendar. And so I'm hoping that if you comment on something not on the consent calendar here, that, you know, we account for that in when we get to things. So if anyone else has their hand up for consent calendar items, or end calendar items, except for Supervisor Stephen.
I very much want to, and I appreciate for all the caregivers as well, but I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda, approve the consent agenda.
All right, looking for a second. Supervisor Bow or Supervisor Bushnell could use a second so we can move forward. I'll second the motion and we'll move it along here, so that's, that's fine. I want to add my two cents with regards to, again, the, the caregiver's proclamation, which really just kind of goes with, you know, the, the realm in which we just discussed with regards to Joe's roots that are working really hard to really help keep the edges and the frays of our fabric of society together, right? And without them, it really, it, it falls apart. And, and they need all due respect and all due, and that doesn't mean just in thanks, but also quite frankly, in compensation. And we need to do our best to, to elevate those important roles in our society. So is there any more comment from board members as we move to vote on, before we vote on consent? Supervisor Bow? All right, please call the roll.
What?
Vote.
I.
I was talking to Ryan. I apologize. I could say I'm rusty, but I haven't even started.
Good practice. Supervisor Wilson? Supervisor Bushnell?
Okay, I, Supervisor Bushnell just informed me that her computer quit, but she votes yes. So we're gonna, we're gonna.
Supervisor Bow? Yes, I think mine's working.
You're in there. All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
The motion passes four oh.
Do is, we should take the comment on non-agenda items at this time while we get the, you know, the other supervisor, Bushnell, back online again as we have a quorum. So let's do that. Ryan, do we have anybody who?
Yes, we do, Chair.
All right, so I see caller number 5288. Please unmute your phone by pressing star six and continue your startup.
Chairman Wilson, this is Kent Swatki. I came back from Mexico. It's always very enlightening down there to see what a functional county or country or something works. I had, my last 28 days, Mother Nature gave me the privilege of working straight through 10, 10, 11, 12-hour days on top of a, on top of one of the buildings I purchased there, a rental, and enjoying Mother Nature 70 feet from the Sea of Cortez, watching the pelicans and watching the, the families all out there enjoying themselves as the COVID effect goes away. It's time, it's time in Humboldt County that, and we'll get to talk a little bit more about that, that goes away. It's quite obvious now, Mother Nature, somebody's sending you a message, it's time for you folks to be back in the chamber. You all could have had your COVID shots. I'm getting my second Moderna tomorrow at 1:40. And it's time for us to get back to functional. This dysfunction is very dysfunctional, and it's time for us to move on. Be careful, but it's also time to be transparent, open, and get back to regular life. I was kind of instructed by Mother Nature to, to do some things, which I think I will, will embark upon a little bit more later. But a lot of things are changing here. Karma's going to land here. Karma is landing here. Those who are corrupt in politics will find their life will not be any fun if they desire to stay in politics. Those who are not here strictly to serve the public but are to line their own pockets will be outed and dealt with. And those who are incompetent in certain positions of leadership will, will find that their, their positions will be untenable. And hopefully, people will, will replace those people. Incompetent people will step forward to do what's in the best interest of the county rather than what's in the best interest of their friends, family, and lining their pocket. Mother Nature's not happy with what you folks have done to her perfect little world here. And I believe she's going to get very even probably this year, so beware. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Mike, you're muted.
Apologize for that. All right, number 3053, please unmute yourself by pressing star six.
Good morning, Thomas Mulder here. Can you hear me? Okay, a couple of things. Project Charlotte, I think it's great, but county roads are horrible. There's tons of tax dollars, millions of tax dollars put into the general fund via cannabis farmers. I would love to see 5% to 10% of that money allocated for proper repairs of county roads. I'm not talking about patch paving. I'm not talking about blow and go. I'm talking about actually doing an evaluation on county roads and allocating that money to repair and replace broken asphalt, culverts that are undersized or don't meet state water board requirements. It's getting kind of old that cannabis farmers have to meet road requirements, but county roads doesn't. So let's, let's put some funding behind that and fix that, especially in the rural districts, fire danger. It'd be nice for you in the, to provide money for county roads to have another mower. I don't think they're going to be able to mow all the fire danger backs that's on these different county roads. It's very, very unfortunate. And lastly, you know what wouldn't be a dysfunctional meeting? An in-person meeting in the chambers. And if you don't think it should be in the chambers, go run out a big hall so people can be six foot apart. But not allowing the public to participate in a public meeting. Some people might have been on here with the schedule of the first half an hour to be able to make their comments, and maybe they weren't able to because technical difficulties. There isn't technical difficulties with in-person meetings. And I'll save my other comments for the actual COVID nineteen update. Thank you.
All right, thank you for those comments. Is there any, I don't see any other hands up. So I'm going to close public comments for, public comment for non-agenda items. And we're going to move into special presentations. And I think this item is brought to us by Supervisor Bow, so I'll let him take the floor.
You must, Chair Wilson. Yeah, I think Anthony Henderson's on here. I know it's a good time for all of us to meet Ted MacArthur. For those that haven't met him, he's our new district ranger for the Six Rivers. I've had the pleasure of meeting him, great guy. And doing some good stuff. But I think we've all heard that the National Christmas tree is going to come from the Six Rivers this year. And there's been planning going on for, well, it goes on year-round. I think they've had us involved for the last four months or so. And it's a pretty big deal, sponsorships and nationwide, they take it across, they take it on tour, tell it to Washington and put it up. And there's a way for our kids to get involved with ornaments.
And there's a way for our kids to get involved with ornaments. It's, it's pretty adept. It's been pretty exciting. We'll meet every, every four weeks. We've been, it's going to be, the Office of Education has been really involved. Some of the local shops have been involved. Redwood Region Logging Conference is getting involved. So there's, there's a lot of people and sponsorships available. So I will let, I guess Nancy will start and then probably feed into Ted and everybody else. So. Nancy, if you're on there.
I am. Can you hear me?
We didn't lose her.
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you and see you.
We can.
Standing. Well, thank you very much. How much time do I have? I want to be very respectful of that.
Well, we're already running pretty far behind.
Thirty.
I would say, do you, how was 15 minutes of you in terms?
Be just fine.
All right, thank you.
Um, so what I'd like to do supervisors, other than thank you for your time, is to give you maybe a seven or eight minute overview of the program and then turn it over to you for your questions. And Ted should be able to join us at the very end. The timing, of course, is a little funny today. And he has this 15 minute block right now where he had to run, but he will be back. I'm going to attempt to share a screen with you. Let me know when you can see that. Hold on.
We can see your screen.
Yay. So welcome to the US Capitol Christmas tree. The US Capitol Christmas tree, under the request from the architect of the Capitol, is provided every year by the US Forest Service. Every 10 years, Region Five or California has the opportunity to provide that tree. This year, it's coming from the Six Rivers. 10 years ago, it came from the Stanislas. California provided the tree five times in the history of Forest Service providing since 1970. Our logo, I want to explain for just two minutes because it really embodies everything that we're doing. Of course, the green symbolized area, the six colors of the river being the Six Rivers and the anadromous fish that's in it. What I love most about this though, is that rainbow of people holding hands, all sorts of people of all kinds and abilities, representing the diversity of peoples in this region and across the nation, supporting each other. Now we have the endemic Lhasak Lupin and acorns, of course, which are foundational to this area and culture. The tree skirt is a traditional tribal basket cap design used with permission. There are 113 lights on that tree. The white ones for the tribes of California, the red ones for the 16 tribes that call the Six Rivers National Forest ancestral land. And surrounding the whole thing, the pattern in the background is the traditional tribal friendship pattern. One last thing, there is indeed, if you look very, very hard, a Bigfoot on that logo somewhere. Now we have a mission. We need to provide one US Capitol Christmas tree. A perfect tree between 60 and 85 feet tall, to be lit by the Speaker of the House and a local, we hope, youth tree lighter who will be sponsored in the trip to DC for the lighting. We will provide up to 125 companion trees for legislative offices and executive branch offices. Not all of them, obviously, but some, especially in the Forest Service, USDA and Department of Interior. We are tasked to provide 15,000 ornaments, 4,000 for the big tree. Those are a foot across each. If you stack them end to end, they'll go nearly a mile. They have to be waterproof, weatherproof, freezer proof. We joke that if you spray it with a full force garden hose, throw it in your freezer and then bang it around on your walls. If it can survive that, it can go on the big tree. We also have to provide 10,000 or 11,000 smaller ornaments for those companion trees, along with handmade tree skirts. To do the ornaments, we will be hosting local events and jumping into your existent local events that may happen in this environment with a booth, helping people of all ages make ornaments. And yesterday, indeed, we saw our news release, you may have seen it on the news this morning or in the papers. We launched our public engagement campaign with a call for ornaments and tree skirts. These can be made by groups or by individuals. Finally, we'll do a whistle stop tour with 25 to 30 stops. 11 days in California, 11 days cross-country, starting in Crescent City, going the length of the state, all the way down to San Diego and hitting a couple of communities of the Sierra Nevada in there as well, with also a stop in Sacramento. Now of the California tour, 11 days, the first three or four days will be spent solely in this area. We want as many people surrounding the Six Rivers National Forest to engage with the tree as wish to. And finally, we end up with Celebration Week in Washington DC. And this is all going to happen in a COVID environment or the new normal environment or whatever were thrown. You know, our intent is clear, but the bigger question is why? We're doing this to connect people to their national forests and the Six Rivers area, whether it's locally or across the state or across the country. And most importantly, this is a huge springboard for us to partner with you and the diversity of peoples and groups in these counties. Here are milestones. As Rex knows, we issued our call for ornaments and skirts on Monday and you've seen that result in the papers and news already. By the end of this month, we should identify all of our candidate and companion trees. And in July, the architect of the Capitol will be out to Humboldt County to select the tree. We do not know where the tree is coming from yet. We will know, I hope, by mid-June. We'll have our areas identified. By September, we hope to have received all of the ornaments and skirts we need. So that's a big push between now and September. Our harvest of that tree is scheduled for October 23rd. An interesting thing is that tree never touches the ground. When we fell that tree, it's immediately lifted by two cranes. We are still identifying a crane provider and laid very gently into its cradle on an 80 foot long trailer. So obviously, access to the tree is, is sometimes tricky because an 80 foot trailer coupled with 40 feet of truck can't go on many of these roads. We spent three or four days packaging this and then we launch our cross-country tour, arriving in the Capitol mid-November for tree lighting, which is not yet announced, but will be on or about the first of December. So there's lots of ways for the community to join in. You can help us with ornaments and skirts and we've reached out to clubs and groups and whatnot. You can host an event for the tree and I'll talk about that in a minute. You can amplify our communications and I will make sure that whoever you wish is on our communications list. You can help with logistics and Rex has been huge and very helpful at that, helping us find venues for packaging and other things. Part of our cross-country trip will be presenting a gift box to over 100 of them, 150, as we travel cross-country, highlighting this area. And so we're putting together gift boxes of local products, hoping to use like Humboldt baskets to do that for us. Local products will also be highlighted in all of the DC events, including the Congressional Reception Sponsor's Breakfast and California State Breakfast. And your presence, your work, even just this call means that you are sponsoring our event. Sponsorship is not necessarily a financial thing for us, although we can do that. But it's, it's this partnership that I alluded to earlier, this ability to springboard into a stronger relationship with the community. So I've rattled on for nine minutes and I would like to stop sharing my screen if I can figure out how to do that. Uh huh, right there. And let Ted MacArthur, who's joined us, introduce himself and speak to you and then we can answer your questions.
Good morning. I apologize for running late as, as they would have it. Siskiyou County and Humboldt County, our agenda item came up at exactly the same time, but I was able to. And I appreciate your patience, but, but I don't want to, Nancy, I'm sure covered it more eloquently than I could. But the main thing I want to share is I'm, I'm very excited that the daylight and highlight, you know, both the Six Rivers National Forest and Humboldt County. We have a spectacular part of the world and I'm really excited to use this venue to highlight what, what's really special about, about us, about the, the community and the, that we, the community that we serve as a forest and the area that we live in. And just really appreciate the interest that Humboldt County has shown so far in, in partnering, partnering with us in this effort and, and many other initiatives that we work on here on the, on the forest. But I really appreciate your time today. And yeah, open any questions you have.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I'm just going to open this up first to supervisors and, and if the public is interested in questions, please chime in here in a minute. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, hi Ted. How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good buddy. Hey, we will have you back again in another four months or so on this, on progress. I, I just felt getting this chance right now. I want to thank you for all the assistance you're giving the people up around Ruth Lake and that area, moving some timber out and getting some things taken care of and stuff like that. You guys have been instrumental up there. And I keep hearing how well it's, it's gone, probably better than when the fire was happening. But it's, this part of it's going on real well, as we've talked about. So. But I want to give that shout out because I heard it from two different people yesterday. But on this, I, I really appreciate Nancy and, and, and the local partners that have already started on this. And I think the, putting it into the magnitude of why this is such a big deal and only five times it's ever come from California and this chanting is from the Six Rivers, your forest. So, and our forest. So I'm, I'm pretty excited. So thank you guys for the opportunity.
Thanks Rex. I really appreciate it. And yeah, we're, there's a lot of important things going on. And this is, this is a fun, this is a fun project and it's a nice, you know, speaking of what, what folks are facing out in Ruth Lake area. That was an awful year. Us are happy with the outcomes there. But, but with all the hard work that's going on out there, this is a way that we can kind of bring a little bit of, of some focus and focus. And, and I'll also highlight part of what's going on out here as well.
All right. Unless I see any from board members. All right, Steve, Supervisor Madron, pardon.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wilson. First, I just wanted to thank Supervisor Bone for his efforts working with the Forest Service on this. And also you, Forest Supervisor Ted MacArthur, I believe, not District Ranger, but Forest Supervisor. Appreciate all the work that Six Rivers does with our fuel reduction work and prescribed fire and just everything else going on out there. I look forward to meeting you in, in the near future. But thank you so much for being here today and for the honor of Humboldt County being able to provide this tree through the Forest Service. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, and, you know, I don't want to get off topic, but I do want to come before the board again and talk about some of the other initiatives we have around fuels, fire management that I think are, are really relevant. But I appreciate that, that.
We'll get that on there too.
All right. And the other supervisor, just want to jump in before we go to the public comment. Michelle, sorry Supervisor Bushnell, getting used to this.
Thank you through, through the Vice Chair. It's very nice to meet you both over Zoom and I look forward to seeing the progression of the National Christmas tree. It's very exciting for Humboldt County.
Yeah, I, I have a hard time not smiling every time I talk about this project. It's, it's just, it's just something, it's going to be a really unique way to highlight Humboldt County and Six Rivers National Forest.
Great. Do we have any public comment? I don't see any hands up from the public currently. And yep, there we have one up and it is from caller number five two eight eight. Please press star six and.
Hello, this is Kent Swawsky. You know, I think, I hope we won't really miss an opportunity here. Because I, I think it's, it would be a really good thing for karma. Quick little story. We came up out of Los Angeles. My, my dad had to do something down at UCLA, coming up here to be a professor. One of the first Christmases, instead of cutting down a tree, my dad dug up that tree and brought it inside. And I always smile when I look outside of our, our, our family house and see about 150 foot tree out there that could have been dead, but now it's alive. And, you know, it would just be a shame to miss the opportunity to not send dead trees or soon to be dead trees back to all these politicians, but take the time. And it may not be legal to do. I mean, we have all kinds of rules, but have them have live trees. Let them take those live trees and care for those trees, find an appropriate place or designate to one of their constituents, a place for that tree to go and be remembered. And, and, and maybe in their hearts, they would understand the necessity of, of taking care of Mother Nature a little bit rather than being mankind and having to, to kill things to celebrate. I think this would be fantastic karma. I, it probably won't come to fruition, but I really would like to see all the politicians who are devastating our, our environment, some are helping them back there. But be able to look at that tree and say, this is a living thing. This is something that should be preserved. And maybe the human race needs to quit killing these things or raising them to kill and find other ways to celebrate through a live tree. I mean, pretty simple. I don't know if it can be done. But I, I'm encouraging you to take a look at that option of having them have a live tree. And maybe their grandchildren will see a tree back in their backyard, the same as my grandchildren are now. There was a Christmas tree inside the house once. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right. Thank you for that. Is there any other public comment before we thank our guests today? And I'll just thank you very much. Thank you Supervisor Bone for bringing this to us. Thank you to our National Forest Service and everyone involved. And Ted and Nancy, I really appreciate everything you guys are doing and bringing this forward. So with that, we have anything else on this one, then thank, thank you very much and we'll see you again. We're going to move on to.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. We're going to, we're going to move on to the public health item related basically to COVID update. If you do that, that would be great. I apologize to Ian and Michelle. Things happen. So I'm glad you're here now. I really appreciate it. So if you want to get started, let's, let's have this conversation and, and update our community.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for coming today to hear the COVID update. The past few weeks have seen an increase in cases in Humboldt County at a level that is consistent with what we saw during winter surge months. The new surge was ushered in by an increase in cases of variant that we had not seen in Humboldt previously, B.1.1.7, also known as the UK variant. It was predicted by CDC earlier this year that come April, B.1.1.7 would be the dominant strain in the US. We saw major increases in B.1.1.7 in states like Michigan and Oregon, where suddenly there were concerns for hospital capacity again and case rates were as high as they had been in the winter months. We'd been suspecting that B.1.1.7 was here in Humboldt as early as March. But without any evidence and only a few confirmed cases in the state, it was hard to be sure. Now that evidence is clear, B.1.1.7 was here and has been here. And now we are seeing the effects of more contagious, more virulent form of the coronavirus. Our hospital cases for COVID-19 in the last few weeks of April rival the worst weeks yet of the pandemic for Humboldt County, with those who are younger and healthier getting sicker. We've worked with our local epidemiology team and the state CDPH epidemiology team to try to understand where this new surge in cases came from, where it is now and where it is going. So far, we can say that the rise in cases of B.1.1.7 date back to the early weeks of April and that they appear to be spread locally without any evidence that they're connected to larger events across the state. Statewide cases remain low. We know that our local church outbreak is the source of many of these recent infections, but that certainly does not account for the dramatic rise in cases we have seen. And so we know that B.1.1.7 is everywhere in Humboldt County and very likely the most dominant strain now locally. And it will be the driver of infection. And it will be the driver of infections in the coming weeks and months until another potentially more infectious strain comes along to replace it. B117 has now replaced the West Coast variant that was dominant on the West Coast since it first was noted in December of last year. So what do we know about this more recent surge in local cases? We know that it's moving swiftly as B117 does, since it's about 50% more contagious. And that that's fitting with our dramatic doubling in both case counts, more than doubling of both case counts from two per hundred thousand to now 13 per hundred thousand. And our test positivity going from 2% to over 6% in the past few weeks. We know that this outbreak is leading to more hospitalizations than we had seen in the past with similar outbreaks. Which also fits with what is known about B117. We know that it's causing more severe disease in younger and healthier people with our current hospitalizations and ICU admissions happening in a much younger demographic than in the past. With our first hospitalization in someone under the age of 19, we've had to transfer more patients out of Humboldt than in the previous two weeks due to their severity or lack of resources to care for them in our county than at any other time during the pandemic. So what is it that we can do to change the course of this? We need to continue to do the things that have worked throughout the pandemic. B117, while it's more contagious and makes people sicker, masking, distancing and vaccination still work. Avoiding large crowds and gatherings reduces your chance of exposure. Following the public health guidance set forth by CDC and CDPH around public spaces, indoor and outdoor events, private events and gatherings, all will reduce the chances that B117 will continue to spread among our families, our facilities, our community. Getting tested is key. We have seen a decrease in willingness to get tested by many in this surge and it's hurting our county. High rates of testing back in the winter months allowed us to find and isolate the virus. By not testing, we allow the virus to grow and pass on to others, meaning the only only the most severe are getting tested. And we're not able to stop the transmission among those who have mild symptoms or asymptomatic or no symptoms at all. Testing capacity remains very high and underutilized and anyone looking for a test can go to Humboldt Health Alert website or call 441-5000 at the JIC to help find a testing site near you or call your doctor. I strongly encourage all who feel they were exposed, have even the mildest symptoms, please get tested. And to do it for your family, for your coworkers, for your community. There are too many folks in the hospital currently who could have avoided hospitalization had they not been exposed, had testing identified those who exposed them earlier in the weeks leading up to this outbreak. Humboldt County now has the worst case rate in all of California. A dramatic change in the tide as we had usually ranked in the bottom for cases, case counts statewide. We need to all work together to bring this back down by following public health guidance on masking, distancing, testing, gatherings, public spaces, as well as participating in investigations to help stop the spread. We need to get vaccinated. There's sufficient vaccine now for everyone. We're not seeing infections in people who are unvaccinated. While there are a handful of so-called breakthrough cases, none of our sickest patients who are feeling ill, hospitalized or on the ICU, none of them have been vaccinated. That's the power of this vaccine. That's what we know from the studies. The vaccine prevents people from becoming very ill and hospitalized from complications that can lead to lifelong effects and the worst, it prevents from dying. The vaccine will protect your family, your friends from getting sick as well. We want every one of us who wants to get a vaccine to have an opportunity. So if you don't know how to get the vaccine, or if you have questions about the vaccine, please call 441-5000 and we'll help direct you to a vaccination site near you and answer any of your questions. Please remember that if you are only partially vaccinated, you're not fully protected and need to continue to follow the same rules as those who are unvaccinated until you've fully complete the vaccine series. And what are the benefits of being fully vaccinated? First, let me clarify what it means to be fully vaccinated. That means two weeks have passed from the last dose of the vaccine series. So for Pfizer and Moderna, two weeks after the second shot and for Johnson and Johnson, that's two weeks after the single dose shot. And so the freedoms that come with being fully vaccinated are things like feeling free to visit your fully vaccinated friends indoors and outdoors without a mask, without distancing and without worry that you might get severely ill from COVID-19. You can hug and give high fives to those fully vaccinated friends and family safely when you yourself are fully vaccinated. It also means you can visit another single household of low-risk folks who are unvaccinated. And you are protecting them from bringing in the virus to their home. In that situation, you wouldn't need to wear a mask or distance from the unvaccinated, low-risk household. Again, able to high five, hug, sing together, break bread together now that you're fully vaccinated. It means outdoors, if you're not in a public area that has potential for crowding, you could forego the mask. Have one handy only if you're approaching other people, a crowd, or need to go into a public space like a store or a business. Being fully vaccinated also means not having to quarantine if you're exposed to COVID-19, which means less impact on your family, on your job, on your community. The stronger public health measures that we used before the vaccination effort will not be possible any longer. Now that the threat of overwhelming the hospital system is gone, those strong restrictive measures on public spaces have mostly been taken down by the state. More restrictive measures on businesses and society won't likely return unless there's a threat to overwhelm our hospitals again. Decisions to return to more restrictive tiers will not be based solely on case counts and percent positivity. It will depend on hospital capacity and our ability to care for the sick in our community. That doesn't mean we won't see severe disease in the unvaccinated, including our youth and hospitalizations and even more deaths to come. Until we can can get our children vaccinated and all who want the vaccine and had a chance to get one, we will continue to see cases, hospitalizations and deaths. And we know that adolescents aged 12 to 15 are likely to be approved for the vaccine in the coming week or two. So please prepare your kids to get the vaccine as soon as it becomes available to them. Humboldt County Public Health and all the vaccine providers in the county will be ready to start vaccinating younger kids as soon as we have an authorization to do so by the federal and state governments, because we feel strongly that this is the best way to protect our kids and our community. We're still hopeful that Humboldt is headed to a great summer full of COVID-safe events that will be done with precautions in place to protect those who are vulnerable. Precautions like masking, distancing, reduced capacity, testing and vaccination. We hope that this current surge will see a plateau or a drop sometime in the coming weeks. Now that we are aware that this new variant is here, we are aware of our need to continue to follow public health directives. And we are aware the vaccine is able to help stop the spread. We want to continue to offer support at 441-5000 to anyone who's looking for information about COVID-19 in general, about testing, about vaccination. Call the JIC to get the facts, to get tested, to get vaccinated. Let's get through this pandemic without losing more lives, without having more families suffer through seeing multiple generations in ICU at the same time. Let's do this together for Humboldt. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hoffman. Is there any more from your side of this, Michelle or any, okay, so great. So let's take some questions from board members first and so any of the board members have any questions or comments before we move to public comment? I let me see here, looking, so I have to bounce back and forth between panels and all right, so let's take a public comment on this if we can and we have a public commenter 5288, please unmute yourself.
Well, that's some wonderful news. I really appreciate that. I came back from Mexico. We were required before we could get on a plane to have a COVID test, so everybody coming out of Mexico on a plane has a COVID test. And they are extremely strict about that. You can get it at the airport there. It's 30 minutes for results and that's kind of interesting. I don't, the volume they're testing isn't extremely high, but they're able to have a lab there. And the cost to us as a consumer is 400 pesos, which is roughly $20 gladly spent for that. Now we get back here, even though the three of us who traveled together back from Mexico. The adults both have had their first Moderna and this is a question that I would like to have answered if possible. When I got my first dose of Moderna, I I'm under the impression I was actually had more resistance 10 days afterwards than the Johnson and Johnson does. 10 days afterwards after my first dose tomorrow at 1:40, I get my second one. Unfortunately, when we got back here into the family unit, my my understanding is that my granddaughter, even though we all tested negative and we've had a share of our shots and things, is precluded from going. So I find that kind of kind of unusual and that doesn't make sense. I'm going to be going ahead and getting me one of those little plastic things you put your name card in, whatever. And putting a copy of my test in that thing when I'm out and about so everybody can be assured that I've had both of my my shots. And I will be taking advantage of not masking and 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 getting back into society. For anybody who is so irresponsible as to not have this vaccine, if we get a mutation that is a fatal mutation for everybody who hasn't had it, I really feel sorry for those people in in being grossly negligent in taking care of themselves or family and participating in society in what is in everybody's best interest. I guess I'm strongly suggesting that morally everybody should have that vaccine, strongly suggest you get it, we can get it now. Looking forward to getting back to normal lives. And I I'm hoping that the Health Department will do everything it can to facilitate and enable us to do that as quickly as possible. Mexico's way more functional down there, their economy doesn't have a blip. No tobacco, no dinero, there's no unemployment, none of the subsidy. And their economy seems to be kicking off and booming and coming right back to what it was right before instantly here. So fourth world countries, they seem to get it straight the first time, don't they? Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you very much for those comments. Next is public member 3053. Please press star six, unmute yourselves.
Hello, Thomas Holder again. So I was, you know, it's sad for and you know, through this COVID pandemic crises, whatever name it you want to put to it that have passed, but I got the new local newspaper today and there's a big fear monger headline about the new variant and locally. And then I was listening to Mr. Hoffman's presentation and saying we're going to see spikes with this new variant. And then in the same presentation, I heard that all the restrictions are being lifted. So someone that's on the fence about being vaccinated by with a trial vaccination, because that's why a lot of people are not getting vaccinated. It's it's misinformation, you know, misinformation, you're getting two different things. My son's back in school four days a week. It's amazing. He went two days a week in October because we switched schools and now he's four days a week. Mental health with all those students is amazing. What about the mental health of the kids that have been forced to sit at home? Because the local school districts can't figure out a way to make an agreement with a local bargaining unit. It's really unfortunate, really, really unfortunate. One question I'd like to see answered. What is Humboldt County's death rate in 2019 compared to 2020? I don't think I've heard that. I've heard rumors from some people that it's pretty similar if you look at the last 10 years. I mean, it's sad for those that we've lost, but something thinking about lifting those restrictions, you know, get the kids back to normal. I don't want to hear about injecting a clinical trial in 12-year-olds. Let's let's look at the the rate of children. You know, think about our future generations when we're talking about this. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any more? Thank you for that. And do we have any more comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Any board members want to jump in at this time? Any hands up? Let's see, I don't see any. All right, so Dr. Hoffman, do you want to maybe help address some of the concerns that were brought up by the public? I mean, one I think is this idea about the vaccination being an experiment. And between the two commenters, one comment was the new variants are quite frankly an experiment as they keep coming, right? In terms of our responses to them. From from personally, I'm going to take the experiment of safety and I don't even think it's an experiment because we went through the trials, that's all been done, the science is solid on this. And so what I don't know, quite frankly, is, you know, with relationship to new variants as they keep coming, we, you know, and the unpredictability of that. And what we're seeing, quite frankly, is just a bigger reaction. Some people seem to want to, I think, make this about deaths only, but we see a lot of impacts in our community, not just for illnesses, but then creating pre-existing conditions for, you know, getting this illness again and multiple times. I think there's some evidence out there that that can be cumulative and dangerous. So again, vaccination keeps you from getting that cumulative impact of that. And so that's also something I think people might want to consider, but also when we are talking about impacts to our hospitals and we had this outbreak occur here, had a big impact on our hospitals, had impacts on businesses that had to shut down, had impacts quite frankly on staff at hospitals. I know that that were impacted directly from this. But then also understanding that, you know, if the hospital's being impacted by an outbreak like this, then if you're coming in with another injury or something else, the capacity to, you know, that you have on other people is pretty, you know, can be pretty impactful. And can you 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 mentioned some people had to be taken out of the county and can you expand upon that and what happened with why people had to leave, you know, what what capacity issue was being stressed upon and why did we have to have people leave the county?
Yeah, thanks Supervisor Wilson. So I, you know, when we were in the height of this back in the winter and, you know, December, January, February, we were prepared. We knew that surges were going on all around us. Hospital capacity in many places was well above maximum, so we had to be able to take care of our own folks. And so many services were shut down during that time, elective procedures had been delayed. The hospitals were prepared to to take on the extra capacity themselves. You know, since we have vaccinated now, nearly 40% of the 16-plus population in Humboldt County is fully vaccinated. So that's, you know, that's a huge improvement. That means that we're not going to face that level of hospital surge that we had the potential to see back in the winter months. But it certainly doesn't change the fact, like you said, that we will see hospital impacts. They just won't be to that level of, you know, overwhelming the system. They got close though, and that's why you saw some of those folks get get sent out of the county for, you know, both for capacity reasons and, you know, for reasons that are common here in Humboldt County. Sometimes patients are sent out because they, we don't have the level of care here to adequately take care of them. But it's something that hadn't really happened at that level in Humboldt County yet in the pandemic. We had the ability to care for for most everyone. So I, you know, again, going back to the restrictions on, you know, that we were putting in place on businesses, on, you know, asking people to stay home. You know, those are the ones that I'm talking about that have been lifted by the state because, again, because 40% of the people are vaccinated now. So those people are protected and the ones who are not protected are people who've chosen to not be protected. Because we, you know, we have done a lot of efforts to try to make the vaccine widely available. We're going to continue to do more efforts to get it out to people who have hard to reach, you know, populations and places that are, sorry, we got an alarm going off outside. You know, in towns and, you know, jurisdictions in Humboldt that are hard to reach. So we're going to keep doing mobile outreach to get those folks who want to get the vaccine but can't, haven't, you know, had the ability to yet. But I think the other is really those kids, the kids, you know, it's not that they don't want the vaccine or their parents don't want the vaccine. They haven't had the chance to be vaccinated yet and so we need to continue to protect They haven't had the chance to be vaccinated yet. And so we need to continue to protect, um, our society until we have the chance to get all the kids vaccinated. So I, I'm really, uh, I think all of us at public health are really, um, happy that the federal government is going to be opening it up, um, potentially next week to 12 to 15 year olds. Um, it's safe, it's effective, it's been studied, just like the, you know, every, uh, age group along the way. Um, so, you know, just highly encourage people to go ahead and, and get vaccinated, uh, once that opens up and, uh, you know, look for appointments for, for those kiddos. So we can get them vaccinated.
I appreciate that. Rex, sorry Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, I just, Rex is fine, please. Um, the only, I heard we were the worst in the state and I was going through the numbers early this morning, just on the state count. And it didn't look like we were worse than the state. It looked like there were some people in that per count for a hundred thousand on the 13 range and quite a few, even some neighboring counties. So I was, are we close to being the worst? Are we just the worst today? I mean, that's a.
When I, yeah, when I looked last night, we were the worst. So it might've changed today. The, the numbers, the official numbers will come out at noon today. Um, so I, I think, yeah, we're, but Siskiyou County was right up there with us. I mean, I think what we're seeing is, um, potentially, and again, we don't know. Cause we don't have all the data back on all the variants, um, that have been sequenced in the last couple of weeks. We're still waiting on a, a final analysis of uh, another like 60 or 70 samples, um, that, uh, many of which are going to be B117. Um, we know that Oregon, you know, in our proximity to Southern Oregon, Oregon's seeing a huge surge in, in that variant and, um, you know, uh, I think as we see some sequencing data from Del Norte and probably Siskiyou County as well, where they, you know, Del Norte had increasing numbers a few weeks ago. Siskiyou's having it this week. Um, we're just, we're going to see that potentially we have that connection to that, uh, you know, Southern Oregon and the other northern counties that are surrounding us.
Good. And I, and I think what's confusing for the people, because I mean, again, there are a lot of people not getting vaccinated. And I don't know with all our powers early, we didn't get the word out that it's coming. You want this enough? I don't know where we, I don't know where the breakdown, or it's just people are not going to get vaccinated and, and we go with that. And then, um, you know, the, the other thing we've got is, um, to get, to get the, the people on board for this, it just doesn't seem, and then when you read headlines that New York is dropping all restrictions, Texas numbers are dropping and they've dropped all restrictions. I will tell you, I was in Reading this weekend. And for everybody that tells me Reading's not wide open, I went into four stores and was told to put my mask on, on all four. I was in the process of, but they, they were making you wear your mask in, but people didn't put their mask on. They didn't say much either. So, but what I'm saying is it's, we're getting so much mixed messages. Maybe we need to put our concentrated message and I know we're trying real hard and everything else, but there's people that, I mean, I get 20 emails a day showing me all the reasons not to take the vaccine. You know, all the way down to, you know, I, I got one, I could show you that basically says, if I take the vaccine, it will start to eat my insides out in three to four years. And I saw my first reaction was to go out and take a 30 year loan out on something. So, um, I'll get back at the banks. Anyway, um, I'm just saying, I just, there's so much misinformation out there. Do we double down on our positive information and get it out there? Because we do know that people that aren't vaccinated, um, and I'm not going to trample on anybody's rights. If you don't want to get it, I, I, I certainly wish you would, but the, the thing is maybe we need to double down is you don't go to the hospital and you don't die if you're vaccinated. Except for three or four years when your insides start to get eaten up, I guess. But anyway, I, I, I don't know how we do this, but we need to get out on that level. If we're going to get this going. I mean, it, it seems simple to me. I know it's much harder to get it out there, but when you have 30% of the county and, 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 and you've got a big percentage number of medical professionals that aren't getting the vaccine. It's just, it's a tough sell, but I think it's a sell that we have to make or, I mean, I don't mind getting sick. I just got this fear of going to a hospital and dying. So, um, I, I, I don't know how we do that. I think you guys have done a pretty good job on, you know, everything that, that going forward, but we're, we're great at hitting them. Well, you guys, we're going to get this, we're going to get this. And I know we, I like, you know, me, I like to hit the highlights because I think people are really trying. And I think there's 70% of the people out there that are really moving forward. I am so excited to see these pictures of families actually getting together after a year because everybody's vaccinated. And I mean, now I'm getting inundated with, um, texts and emails. Are we going back? Are we stepping back a tier? And I personally say, if we go back a tier, you're going to have a rebellion like you've never seen. The, the businesses, some of these businesses are just clawing themselves out of almost bankruptcy. And I don't think we're going to see it. And I think, um, I want to thank the local church for, you know, they, they had an issue. They were, they were, they were following their faith, but I can't hold them against that. But I think they, they did well amongst themselves. Set up food trains for their families, quarantine them and everything, but, and then they worked with us real well. But I think that variant, that, that group was a big number of that group. I mean, I thought Monday, 33 cases in three days, that's 11 a day was a good number. And I know we were hitting bigger numbers than that during the surge, surges we were having. So I just, I think we go moving forward, but I think we double down on getting the information out there. If you really want to get the information out there, because you've got a lot of people convinced.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that Supervisor Bone. And I, um, I really think that, um, you know, we do want to focus on the positive. What does vaccination get you? You know, like you said, it gets you the ability to, uh, spend time with your family who you haven't seen in, in a long time and, um, you know, move more freely about society without worry. And, and without worry that you're going to potentially infect someone else, uh, your, your family, your friends, your coworkers, uh, ability to not have to quarantine. I think that's a huge one that, uh, people, um, maybe overlook. Because, you know, a lot of times, uh, people, when they have to get quarantined or, um, you know, they get infected, they're isolated. They're sometimes out of work for many, many weeks. Um, so that affects their, their bottom line. Um, I think I totally agree to right, uh, Supervisor Bone, we all need to, you know, get out there and talk about the vaccine. Why, uh, why we, uh, want it, why we got it ourselves. You know, I think it's important for us as leaders in this community to, to stand up and, and say, you know, I have the vaccine, I'm vaccinated, uh, and this is why I, I got vaccinated. So I encourage all of us here today, um, who have been vaccinated to, to do that in our communities, because I think that's going to have a ma- a major, um, impact. And, and then certainly misinformation's out there. I think that's, I'm not sure that's the main driver. I think there are, um, you know, some people who will never be convinced. And, um, you know, we can try to answer their questions as best we can with scientific knowledge. Um, but there's a lot of people who, you know, there's other issues. There's, you know, uh, if it comes down to having to pay 20 bucks in gas to get to a vaccination site, um, that might be a huge barrier. How do we get over those barriers? Um, people who are just maybe fearful of getting it in certain sites, they'd rather get it at their doctor's office. So we're working towards that end. Um, uh, you know, just not having the knowledge, not knowing that they can book an appointment now. Uh, I think this, again, the shift from, uh, uh, scarcity mentality that we didn't have enough vaccines and now that there is enough for everyone. Takes a while to get out there. So hopefully we'll get some of those folks. Uh, I did read, you know, the New York Times today had a map of the United States and every county in there. Uh, they, a survey that was done and, uh, for Humboldt County, they had us, uh, over 80% of people said that they would probably likely get the vaccine. So I, I think that, you know, we, we have work to do still, all of us to promote the vaccination effort, um, to help people get to vaccine sites. And also as public health, our job is really to get that information out there and to get, um, you know, mobile vaccine sites out in as many communities as possible. It's going to take time, but we'll, we'll do it. We have a lot more barriers as a rural community, uh, than, you know, some of the urban communities where it's much easier to get a large population by just standing up a site in a neighborhood and people can walk there. You know, here we have a lot of people who can't get to vaccination sites. So we're working on all those things. But I appreciate everyone's support and anything we all can do to get out the word out there. The vaccine is safe, it's effective. You know, we as leaders have got ourselves to protect our family, our friends and our community.
Uh, I just want to step in here. Uh, Michelle's been, excuse me, Supervisor Bushnell has been very patient, uh, with her virtual hand up. So I want to let her, uh, jump in and say what she needs to say.
Thank you, Vice Chair Michelle Spine. Um, I have a, I have a few questions. Um, my, my first question is, um, I've gotten some questions about children having to mask while they're outside on the playground. And I know there was some stuff from the state that was swirling around last week. Can you, um, comment on that?
Yeah. So, um, you know, in a school situation, schools are still, uh, dictated by CDPH's guidelines, which have not changed around masking at school. So, you know, inside and outside at schools, children, uh, and, and even vaccinated teachers need to still mask. Um, so really when we talk about the new CDPH guidelines about taking a mask off in certain scenarios, um, it's not at work. So school is a work situation. It's, uh, it's protected under different, um, rules and regulations, um, through Cal OSHA. Um, so, so we kind of take that out of the equation. Yeah. I mean, so when we look at, um, CDC recommendations around masking in outdoor environments, um, you know, it, it's still recommended if you're around other people who are not in your household, you're not sure if they're vaccinated and the kids are definitely not vaccinated, uh, that those kids continue to mask in that environment. So I, I think that until we have a lot more protections, uh, in place, um, the, the safest thing for, for kids and people to do in that environment is to go, continue to mask, um, to protect everyone. Um, so when we look at crowded environments, that's really what we're talking about. But if you're just out on a walk with your family, you know, they're in, you know, people who are in your, um, your bubble and your family. Um, you're on a bike ride or, you know, out taking a hike in nature. Um, that's where we're talking about, you know, you don't need to take a ma- have a mask on you all the time now. Um, have one handy in case you, you know, run into some folks and you want to sit and chat for a little while, um, you want to go into a store or, um, you know, you hit a crowd of people, that, that would be appropriate still to put a mask on.
Thank you. My next question is, um, I have gotten several questions about the vaccine and would, does the vaccine require that you get a booster within a year?
Um, there's not any, uh, definitive, uh, recommendations yet on a booster. They are, you are studying the, or, you know, uh, CDC and all the companies who are making the vaccines are studying, uh, boosters as potential, um, need, you know, especially for variants, if they come, if variants come up that potentially could make vaccination, um, uh, less effective. Uh, but as of right now, there's no specific recommendation. So we're just at the, you know, one and done for Johnson and Johnson. Um, two shots for Pfizer and Moderna, and then two weeks later you're fully covered. And we, there was, I, I'll, let me take a second to mention, uh, on the point of, um, early on, CDC put out some language around 90 days after you're, um, you're fully vaccinated, uh, that you're, you know, you can avoid quarantine. And, um, there was, there's been some question that came up around that. Cause for some of the first people who got vaccinated in those first two weeks, they're, they've just passed the 90 day mark, but that has all been taken away. So there is no like expiration on when your, uh, vaccine, you know, is, is not valid anymore. So once you're fully vaccinated, you're fully vaccinated, you know, if we come up with recommendations down the line for boosters, we'll get that information out to folks. But right now you're, you're good for, you know, indefinitely.
Thank you. Um, with the variant testing, is it a random amount of, of pulls that you do from tests and send them out? Because we're not currently testing for the variant here in Humboldt.
Um, we, we run from Humboldt County Public Health Lab, we run as many of those as we can. We have a really great relationship with a lab in San Francisco called Biohub. Um, and so anything that has enough virus in it to sequence, we send to them. Uh, so we actually have some of the highest rates of sequencing in the whole state, uh, because of that. Um, probably somewhere around 25, 30% of all of our COVID samples in the, or, you know, positives, um, throughout the whole, well, since we started doing sequencing last summer, have been sequenced. Um, and that's a huge number. A lot of places, it's only in the like low, you know, one, two, three percent range. Um, so we have a, I, I think we have a really good handle on, on our variants here. And I, you know, I think we're going to see that picture, um, expand greatly over the next week or so, as we, um, get some more information. But it's pretty clear, we had, you know, we had the West Coast variant come in in December, kind of took over throughout December and January. Um, was dominant throughout February and March and, and, you know, was, was really the, the main one that was circulating. And then probably somewhere around late March, early April, um, we saw that shift to the UK variant, the B117. And now we're just seeing that almost all the samples coming back are that B117. So it's really taken over.
Thank you. Um, can you confirm how many, um, positives we had out of the super spreader and how many hospitalizations?
Um, you know, uh, roughly around 60 positives from, uh, from that event. Um, and then there's more who were connected to other folks, but you know, who attended church services, roughly 60 or, or a little more. Um, and we're still gathering more data on that. Um, in terms of hospitalizations, um, I believe it was somewhere in the low teens.
And do you know if they, I mean, I, it's presumable that they weren't masking in the church, but do you know that?
Um, you know, I, I, I don't know exactly everyone's behavior because we didn't, um, get to interview every single person in that event. Um, so, you know, certainly if there is more information, people are willing to share about, um, that. Um, I know the pastor, um, says they encourage masking, um, they support masking and, um, I, I do know some of the other events we saw videos of, there were many unmasked people at those events. So I, I, you know, but I, we didn't have any videos of the actual, um, local churches here. Um, but I, I think it's clear that the risk for people is, is greater if they take their mask off indoors. And that's why, you know, those precautions are there and they're not going away yet. That's, that's the one that's going to remain is masking until, you know, we can get this, um, you know, really in a place where all the kids have the ability to get vaccinated, because we don't want to, um, you know, have, ha- have them get sick when they shouldn't have to. It's not, you know, it's not fair to them. Um, so once everyone's had a chance to get vaccinated, I think that's when you'll start to see the discussion of, you know, dropping mask mandates across the board, across the state of California.
So, okay. Um, okay. Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Supervisor Bushnell.
All right. Thank you, Supervisor Bushnell. Yes, Michelle, Stephen.
I just wanted to, to really highlight, I think it's important for folks to know that we're seeing the variant in cases in Humboldt County that are not connected to the church event. And, and, and so it's here. It is a concerning variant, just like other variants of concern that are out there. Because younger people are getting sick. One of the, one of the, one of the sort of things that we were all holding on to early on was that we weren't seeing kids getting really sick, right? And so, and with these variants, that's what we're seeing. And so that's what's scary is that there, there is no vaccine to protect children right now. And we're seeing kids getting severe illness from this. And so, um, that's why vaccination is more important now than ever for adults, um, and those that are eligible, 16 up right now for Pfizer. I think that, um, you know, if, if people don't feel comfortable getting vaccinated, um, more often than not, we listen to our friends and loved ones about why they get vaccinated or why they don't get vaccinated. And so I would just encourage everybody to talk to folks that have and listen to their reasons why. And if they want more scientific information, it's there. Um, it's there. So we can help provide more information. They can just call the JIC at four four one five thousand if they have questions about it. Um, if you get more questions, send them our way. Um, but I think that, that for me, as a mom worries me, right, is, is how sick kids can get from these variants that are happening. Um, and that's why we're opening up. That's why we're still able to open up is because the, the higher the vaccination rate, the better herd immunity we have and the less restrictions there has to be. So it's not that there's, um, a discrepancy in that. Um, it's, that's why, um, the hot, the state looks at our positivity rate and our, um, our testing rate. And if, if, uh, those things are both in the tiers and the. And if, if those things are both in the tiers, in the higher tiers, they're going to look at our hospitalizations. And so I think it's important for us all to remember that not only do we get sicker from these variants and we end up in the hospital, it, that's, that's a factor that the state is looking at for reopening as well. So it's not going to be easy for us to, to close back down, I guess. That's not what the state wants. I think, I think the message out there is vaccination is going to keep us open, our economy needs it. So we all need to do our part, basically, and get vaccinated.
Right, thank you. And I think Supervisor Bone has something to say.
I just, I, I was at the Veterans Clinic yesterday and they're, they're doing 50 or 60 a week. And, and, and they said a good portion of our veterans are, are vaccinated. So that was, that was good to hear. And Michelle, how many, how many kids have gotten sick? I know we have one in the hospital, but I'm not seeing any schools, any large, you know, like we've seen before. And I mean, you know, Neil River, most of the schools, Neil River stayed open and, and very successfully. And now Urico City Schools are back somewhat. But I haven't seen, you know, usually here, you know, Joe Jones Elementary just got shut down because they tested positive. I'm not hearing that. So how many, how many kids, I know we, we've heard this a lot, the kids are getting sick, but how many kids have gotten sick? I mean.
Ian, you're closer to what the cases look like right now. Do you, do you, can you answer?
Yeah, I don't, I can't give you exact numbers off the top of my head, but I can tell you for sure that the shift in the last few weeks, really month, both here locally, nationally, statewide, has been that kids are getting this more than adults, like, you know, the, and, and it makes sense when you think about what's going on. The adults got vaccinated first, so they're immune now. They don't, they're not going to get sick anymore. And the kids haven't been vaccinated yet. We are seeing. Uh, you mean, I'm sorry, hospitalizations?
Hospitalizations, I know we've had one, but.
Oh, no, it's, I, I mean, I would, I, again, I don't know the numbers. We could go back and pull those for you, Supervisor Bone, but it's definitely quite a lot.
No, as a, as a grandparent, unlike a parent like Michelle and stuff, I'm concerned because I'm not seeing schools being shut down.
Well, we don't, we don't need to shut down the schools though. They're not, they're not the source. These people are getting it outside of school. They're getting it, you know.
But they're going, okay, I'm sorry.
We're not, we're not seeing spread within the school. So I don't, you know, I don't, I certainly, you know, we, we don't feel as public health, that schools are a, a public health threat or else, you know, obviously we would shut them down. But we've worked very hard with the schools and, you know, designing things to put in place, like keeping the masks on, ventilation, you know, the distancing, but even, even the distancing looks like for the kids, it's, you know, not as big of a barrier as it is for adults. You know, which is why we've allowed for more permissive, you know, distancing. We're not seeing cases in the schools. We do, you know, when we have a kid who comes to school who was infectious, we, you know, work with that school to identify contacts and put those people on quarantine. And so far, we have not really seen significant spread in the school itself. I think what you're seeing is people outside of school, either in their homes, they, you know, they go to friends' houses, they go to families' houses. They go on travel, they travel, they go on trips. And sometimes, you know, through organizations maybe that aren't following the guidelines quite as well, they're not masking, they're not distancing. We might see spread in those ways. And that's, that's really, you know, I think what we went from was all the kids were at home, you know, and most of the parents, to now we're just more open and the kids, most kids are back in school. I mean, I think pretty much every district around Humboldt is doing live instruction out in person. Many of them are going back to four and five days a week. So you're, you're seeing kids just, you know, getting out there more. And it's not, but it's not in the school setting, it's really outside of school. And so people need to remember that, you know, all of those things, when you go out to your friend's house, just because your kid's in school, doesn't mean you can go over to the friend's house and play unmasked and not worry about that exposure.
Supervisor, Supervisor Bone, I think what you, what you were asking about hospitalizations, if, if children aren't hospitalized, we're still seeing higher fevers, we're seeing rashes in the kids that have gotten sick lately. It may not happen where they're in school and there's an, there's an outbreak within the classroom. It's not being spread or transmitted from one child who has it, who got it from outside of school. And then they go to school and then transmit it to other kids. It's not so much that, but the kids that are now sick, we had children sick before. Children who are sick now, we're seeing, what I'm hearing is higher fevers, rashes, they're just sicker. And so that's the concern, right? It's, we weren't seeing symptoms like we were seeing before. Kids, you know, mildly symptomatic before are just getting sicker now because of these variants.
No, I just, yeah, and I was just trying to figure out how that many, I, I heard something about even half of the cases are kids. And I didn't know if that was happening here. I thought, or maybe I misunderstood.
I think it's about 20 to 30% of cases are in kids now, which is much higher. It used to be like 1 or 2%.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, Michelle, do you have anything more or can, okay. I just wanted to reiterate, thanks for your work. Oh, well, Steve, I just want to make sure that you had a chance, if you weren't going to, if you needed to say anything before we close this item out. All right, so I just want to thank you guys for, you know, the work that you're doing in this. I want to also, you know, the emphasis on the idea that everyone can get a vaccine, right? There, it's, it's, you're right, there's proximity, people maybe aren't living near where it's convenient, but also just work schedules. You know, there are folks that just work all the time, they got two kids. And, you know, it's just very difficult to meet that thing. And I know, I know, or, you know, meet that time space in space. And I know you guys are reaching out to some of our business community in terms of some of the business park areas, as well as, as well as various industries and really working to get into there. And I, I appreciate that. And I hope you work to keep getting into that space. I really do think it is, now it's like the folks that want to get it, that have a hard time getting it are quite frankly, working people, right? You know, busy working people, two, two people trying to keep it together with kids. It's just, it's tough. So I, you know, let's be what we can do with that. I do want to, you know, emphasize again that what you're, you know, what I hear you saying too is, as, as adults, we're responsible to the folks who can't get the vaccination, which are the young people, right? They can't get it. We're responsible to protect them, right? And, and vaccination is a big, is a big part of that. And it's not just, again, getting sick. The, these are pre-exist, these are often becoming pre-existing conditions. And they're becoming pre-existing conditions in children. So it's just not like some sort of one-off, I got sick from COVID and then everything's, everything's cool, right? It's like there, there are some risks associated with even recovery from COVID. I've also, you know, I think there was a, an article that basically talked about, there are folks that believe that because if they had COVID before, somehow that their resistance is to getting it again is, is high, or maybe even higher than a vaccination. But it's really turning out vaccinations are far more protective than, than having had COVID. And again, what we're seeing is people be getting, you know, getting variants later has, in many peoples having more serious impacts on their health. I just really want to reiterate that we need to protect our community from creating variants, quite frankly. You know, and, and, and the best way to do that is be, is getting, is getting vaccinated. And, and I want to emphasize too that, you know, we did have a super spreader event. It did have impact not just on the, the church that had that situation, but had impact into the greater community, had impact on businesses. Quite frankly, it even, one of the, there was, we even have a board, a member of our Board of Supervisors that has an indirect impact from, from, from that event. And, you know, we have to take responsibility for those things. If this was a business that this, that this happened to, I, I'm not so sure, you know, how, what our reaction would be. And I, I want to make sure that in a community that sort of, you know, I, I feel quite frankly, you know, was kind of flagrant in the, in the, you know, not taking these, these warnings seriously, but also every one of those people who was sick and in the hospital that did not have a vaccination. And I want to make, you know, that is, that is, and, and we really need to encourage our community leaders, both in a business and religious and everywhere else, that this is really important to, to get us to a place where we're safe. Because it's, this disease is endemic. I mean, it's here. And the only way we're going to get a, a handle on this is, is through the vaccination process. And so with that, I'm ready to close this. So, Supervisor Madron, I, I recognize and seed the floor.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So, yeah, I was impacted by the super spreader event in that I was at the Trinidad Restaurant a week ago Friday, which was in that winter, where they said, if you were at our restaurant, Monday through Friday, you ought to get tested. I had never been tested before because I had never had any symptoms or exposure to anybody and had been pretty sequestered for the last year. At any rate, I'm here to tell you that it only took me a total of a half an hour to get my vaccine. It was quite simple. It was a really quick process. So you can do it at your lunch hour, right? I mean, even if you're working and such, there are so many slots available right now. You can pretty much fit it around your lifestyle, whatever that is. After I had been potentially exposed at the restaurant, I did get tested. Last week, I got tested at three days on Monday. And then I thought, well, I should get tested at maybe seven days. So I got tested Friday as well. Both were negative. I'm glad to, to know. But it did affect me and I sequestered again for another 10 days or so. So these things do have impacts outside of our own choices, right? They can impact other people. The testing took me, I was in and out in five minutes, literally. I mean, you can call, I called up and 10 minutes later, I was getting tested. You know, so it is super simple, very available, and I highly recommend doing it. I got to Johnson and Johnson's and I'm glad I did. So anyway, there's my story, no impact negative, but definitely did impact my family for another week or two because of the potential exposure. So, anyway, thanks for all you're doing out there, folks.
And thank you again. And, and again, it's not just about freedom, it's also about our convenience as well, to be quite frank. I mean, it's, we're going to be inconvenienced as a, as a society and as individuals if we're not vaccinating because there will be more and more requirements that will be coming for proof of vaccination or, or testing. And that is just, you know, that's going to be in travel, that's going to be in education, that's going to be in all kinds of levels. And so, and we've dealt with that before on, on a host of other issues. And, and for those of us, I mean, I remember people in my life who had polio, right? And you, and the impacts on their lives. And we don't see that anymore. We may have forgotten the impacts that that had and the requirements around getting polio vaccinations that were pretty darn strict. May affect if you traveled out of the country, you had to have your World Health Organization card. And I think we're going to see that coming back as well. And, and with regards to requirements in schools and those sorts of things. And so I, I have to say the, that's the direction we're going. And I'm hoping everybody can, can, can be there for their community. Again, thank you guys for being here. Thanks a lot for this robust discussion today. I'm glad we only do this every two weeks instead of every week. And I am going to ask us to, it's 11:15 right now. We're going to take a break till 11:30 and we'll come back in, in the session for the next item. So 15 minutes, we're going to take a break. Everybody, for returning to this exciting meeting. All right, so next on the agenda, we will adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and we will reconvene as the Humboldt County Public Authority for In-Home Supportive Services. And with that, I will let the DHHS staff take us on to, let us know what, what we're doing here. Or look at the recommendation to appoint an IHSS Advisory Board Member. Do we have anyone from our DHHS staff? CAO Nelson.
I saw, I saw David on here earlier, but I do not see him on now and I.
If we, if we don't have someone here, we can move to the next item and come back to that if.
Well, may I also suggest that I, you can just make a motion to approve to appoint Sarah Mixon to the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Board.
All right, I, I think, I think it looks like Supervisor Bone is anxious to do that. And so I'm going to step in and let him, let, go for it.
I make the motion to support Sarah Mixon. She does a great job at Salvation Army and I think she'd be a great addition to the IHSS.
IHSS.
Compared to the IHHS. So I, I make that recommendation.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. All right. Do we have any public comment on this item? All right, we have a commenter, we have number 5288. Please press star six and proceed.
Well, I, I wish again to reiterate, and I really wish to thank the two supervisors who took the time to make comment during consent regarding the importance. I'm, I understand probably the other two supervisors' hearts are there, but it's always nice for those people in these positions to have a unanimous heartfelt encouragement for what they do out there. It's a very difficult job and, and I will continue to thank them for what they do every opportunity I get, as you can see. So again, thank you and thank you for the people on the board. And let's keep this, this situation going on more functional than it is. I'm hoping they're getting the training they need. I'm hoping they get all the other support they need. And I'm hoping that again, as, as spoken earlier, within the guidelines and boundaries of financing within the county, we've just spent quite a bit of money hiring or opening at least one of the most expensive positions in the CAO's office. Maybe when it comes time to labor contract, we can remember that and spend our money for these people to give them those raises and give them the support they need. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone else from the public? All right, do we have any public comments on this item? Being none, I'm bringing it back to the board and staff if there's anyone, staff that needs to.
Good morning. This is David Garcia. I'm the Director of the IHSS Public Authority. My apologies, my connection lost there for a moment. Yeah, we're just here to take care of routine business. We just wanted to present Sarah Mixon's application for approval for serving as a member of the IHSS Advisory Board. And I do have Margaret Lewis here, who is the chairperson for the Advisory Board, and she would like to make a few comments, but I'm going to hand it off to Margaret.
I'm getting, I'm overtalking with this person who's commenting. I can't hear.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, could you mute public commenter 5288 please?
Getting the training they need.
This is the second time it's run.
Yeah, you, you have the video stream and the Zoom meeting open at the same time, I believe. And so if you just close out the, the video stream and just have the Zoom open, then you should eliminate one of the feeds.
One of the most expensive positions in the CAO's office. Maybe when it comes time to labor contract, we can.
Margaret, did you hear the instructions there?
I can't hear you. I can only hear the comments, public comments. Okay, now, maybe keep him quiet. Yeah, but thank, thank you very much, everybody. I'm.
Margaret, can you turn off the video?
My video?
Yes. Well, not there, your video feed, but you're, what you're listening to, it appears that you're listening to the meeting itself through the delay.
Okay, I think I, okay. Okay.
Margaret, I think what it is, if you opened up the window to wa- So Margaret, I think what it is, if you opened up the window to watch the board earlier today, if you close that window and keep the one that you just joined in open, I think that will resolve the problem.
Oh, okay.
Could you
Sorry.
There you go.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear and not ourselves, so that's great.
I can't see you, but I'm I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say uh that uh we appreciate your work on our behalf and um we are working hard to recruit uh IHSS workers, care providers. And um, uh, we have published a bulletin, we are putting an insert in the time standard to that effect, and um we are down on our membership, that's why we are very delighted to have Sarah Mixon. Uh, she's been loyal and faithful, she's come to meetings, she's serving on our uh budget and um service enhancement uh committee. And she's extremely dynamic, and she has been able to help us with our um uh media, you know. Uh, I'm I'm losing my my thoughts here, I'm getting distracted by not being able to see you. But anyway, uh, we we are very glad to have her on board, she's been waiting a long time, and uh she'll be delighted to hear about uh her uh in-statement on the uh, on the board, thank you.
Thank you very much for your service and helping to uh recruit and uh, you know, mentor folks to to be in these important positions, our unsung heroes of multitudes of committee members that help it all keep going, so thank you so much. I think we're ready for a uh roll call vote. Uh, Ryan, you want to get us started?
Yes, Vice Chair, thank you. Supervisor Bone?
Please, yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Absolutely.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Yes, thank you very much. And with that, I'm, we're going to adjourn as the uh Humboldt County Public Authority for In-Home uh Supportive Services and re-adjourn as the Board of Supervisors, in which we're going to a Planning and Building Department item, submission of a grant application to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, Community Development Block Grant Program, Coronavirus Response Round Two of Three.
Thank you, Chair Wilson, good morning, John Ford with Planning and Building, joining me is Andrew Whitney. It's really a simple request to authorize the Planning and Building Department to request an app, or submit an application for grant funds. The grant funds at this point would be used for two purposes, one is to uh uh install an elevator uh within uh local um uh, I believe, uh, affordable housing complex, and then the other, or at the Humboldt Inn.
Thanks, Johnny.
And the other would be to uh provide the health center improvements um uh within the county, and so the total is one million, one hundred and four thousand, it's seven eighty-eight, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. With your authorization, we would submit the application to receive those COVID funds. Andrew Whitney is also here to answer any specific questions you may have about these grants.
Uh, thank you, uh Director Ford, does any, do any of the board members have questions uh with regards to this item? Uh, Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, Andrew, on the elevators at Humboldt Inn, is that for both wings, or are we just gonna put an elevator in one of them?
I believe that's for three elevators, believe it or not. I think there's three uh, three elevators that are needed to access the upper stories, so it's at least two, maybe three. And I gotta check in to get that exact, but yeah, both wings.
For, okay, and that's for how many rooms?
Um, again, I'm not sure, it basically Yeah, I think so, yeah, it basically doubles the capacity for the accessibility uh rooms. So they, you know, they're, they're finding that most of the people there have mobility issues um on and off, and the elevators will allow them to serve, you know, their, their clientele much better, essentially getting them into their rooms.
Okay, so, and this, I'm asking way too many questions here. Wouldn't you be able to, wouldn't you be able to just put one in one building and then since they're so close to each other, build a causeway to the other one and not have two mechanical things to break down at the same time?
Uh, Supervisor Bone, that it, that's an idea, and, you know, they have the plans specked out by an architect. Um, and it's all engineered, so I'm not sure why they they went with the multiple elevators versus the causeway concept, but yeah, I I I'm not sure exactly why they went with that strategy, but um, they're the ones, it's Providence St. Joseph Foundation, they're running it, and so I assume they, they thought it through. Uh, they did get uh an architect, like I said, to to develop the plans.
No, I appreciate what Providence's doing with that unit, I just, that's fine, thank you.
Great, I'm gonna take this out to the public, and it looks like we have one hand up um from uh, number five two eight eight, please unmute yourself using star six and make comment.
I do have a a question, um, this sounds like a rather large sum of money. Were, were the people in this community notified that was available, was there an RFP process? Uh, or just a certain group of people found out about something? I've been out of country quite a bit, but I do kind of keep track of things, especially when there's something that might be beneficiary to other people in the community. I'm not saying the projects aren't good, but for someone like me and other people to just, the first time you hear about something when it's being awarded, um, maybe you need a little bit more um publicity, that there's money out there, maybe you get more of a varied grant position, maybe you get three different elevators in three different locations. Uh, just a question from the public, how the, how the process worked in these two people, two groups were rewarded. Do you have some committee that did the oversight and recommendations? Um, it's, you know, it's just a question, it's our public money, I think, coming through COVID relief, and we sure would like to know exactly how this money is being dispersed and uh, of course, we want full transparency, isn't that a key word there, we all realize that. So I, those are just some questions out there, and maybe in the future, there'll be a little bit more, more knowledge, maybe there was, maybe I missed it. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you for the comment from the public, I don't see any other public comment uh hand raised. So moving back to the board, uh, it looks like Supervisor Bone has a question or comment?
No, I can do a
Motion?
Motion to staff approval, and if anybody's wondering how this came about and the timeframes of how it was noticed and everything else by all the government agencies involved in our Building Plan Department, it's pretty well mentioned in the staff report, so I appreciate the extensive staff report, and that answers a lot of questions that people read the agenda. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to approve, do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any further conversation about this? Seeing none, uh, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Yes, and with a caveat, I just, yes, but Michelle, Bushnell and I were talking, I'm glad to see Rural Health on here, we were talking about that, because they've done a marvelous job to, through this cor, you know, through this COVID.
Okay. Thank you, um, Director Ford and Mr. Whitney and all your work on this important stuff. Um, Jefferson, so I just, we we really just have two closed session items left for the day. We're kind of bumping up near where people might want to get some food at some point, but I want to, you know, could you give me some uh idea of what you, what you think of these items, how much time they may take?
Um, my guesstimate would be uh thirty to forty-five minutes.
For both items?
Yes.
Thirty to forty-five minutes, so that'd be like twelve thirty, all right, yes?
There is one more item on the agenda still.
Oh, wait.
Reading the subdivision ordinance the second time.
Hold on.
It was on the consent.
It was on consent.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Wow, confusing me, all right, so uh with that, um, I'll just take a temperature of the board. Um, that would mean if we just, if we blazed on through, we'd be out of here at um about twelve thirty, does that sound like good for everybody, or does anyone need a break or anything?
Blazing saddles, let's go.
All right, so let's, let's do that, I, I know that, uh, I think that seems like the most reasonable thing to do. So let's uh, let's keep going, so um you wanna, we're gonna go into closed session, and you want to open that up for us, uh Jefferson?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. It's the intention of the Board to meet in closed session on two items. The first is a conference with legal counsel pursuant, pursuant to Government Code five four nine five six point nine D one to discuss existing litigation in the case of Martenson versus County of Humboldt, case number CD one nine zero one one three one. The second is conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code five four nine five six point nine D two. In E two, in one case, the dissolution of the agreements with the Shasta County Private Industry Council for Workforce Development Services.
Okay, and I appreciate that, and also I want to acknowledge uh, there was some discussion with staff about when, you know, there'd be a lunch break, and I know that's changed a bit, so just acknowledging that, that we're gonna, we're gonna jump into this and hopefully try and be out of here um around noon thirty. So with that, we're gonna close this session out and jump into our closed session.
Uh, public comment?
Oh, sorry about that, public comment, thank you so much, public comment number five two eight eight. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mike, um, yeah, I I did, I don't really know what this Martenson case is, I haven't had the opportunity to check into that one. I think it's the first time I've seen it on the closed session. The number two item here, uh, is that that particular group that wanted to get prepaid for all the stuff they were doing, or is that a different one? Remember, we had some group that kind of wanted to be prepaid because they wanted their money in advance, and it sounds like the same one. Maybe you could answer that question whether that's just for me. And lastly, I'd like to uh make comment on uh Rex's comment about reading the uh staff reports. Uh, he reads them. Uh, during, during testimony in the past, the other people have admitted they don't read the staff reports frequently, and the public doesn't have time to do that, Rex, we don't get paid to do that, we get paid to uh do nothing, but we like to be informed as far as things are going on, so complete reports are are good for us rather than having to read all the staff reports, which you do do, so I appreciate you doing that. Thanks for having me to speak on this, and I guess I'll get a report out on closed session. I'd like to get a, a question, maybe you won't answer it, but whether that is the particular group that was pressuring us to prepay for their services on item number two.
Okay, well, with that, we're gonna move into closed sessions, is there any other comments or questions? All right, we'll see you over in closed session. All right, well, there's three of us here, so Jefferson, you wanna get it started?
Thank you, Vice Chair. On item M one, there is no reportable action. On item M two, the Board voted four zero with Chair Bass absent to end the investigation into the dissolution of the agreements with the Shasta County Private Industry Council for Workforce Development Services.
Great, that sounds good, I think we're ready to adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for a bumpy ride today, I think we'll hopefully, if I ever have to do this again, it'll be a little, little smoother, so.
Are we adjourning in memory of someone?
Oh, I don't know, I have not been told of that, are we?
Saw a new one up there, let me ask.
That was from last week.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Timothy Gray, so, all right, uh, with that, I, we adjourn this meeting and we'll see y'all next week, if not sooner.